Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431, .03A, 34, and 9. Official business to come before the board. Director Mornian, Chief Financial Officer. Item number one, discussion of possible action. Discuss services level breakdown mandated essential discretionary by department and how it correlates to funding sources. Director Mornian.
Good morning Chairman Lingenfelter, board members. If I could get the presentation up on the screen. So what we have here is a chart that shows every fund within the county's $580 million approved FY 2024 budget. So a couple of things that I do need to point out here is that this is based off of our state budgeting forms, at least on the budgeted revenue side, which is left hand of the screen. Service levels mandated essential discretionary are not an element that's contained in those budget forms. And so this exercise, you know, it's kind of a little bit akin to pushing a square peg into a round hole. There's not always going to be a direct correlation at the department level between the revenue source and that level of service. Some departments are 100% mandated. A good example of that would be the treasurer's office or the county attorney's office. Some departments have funds within them that are grant funded, and so they're not necessarily for mandated service. We based the categories of mandated essential discretionary off of information that the departments provided to finance during the budget formulation process. So I just need you to know and understand that right now. So there's basically two slides. These were provided in the backup. You know, we've mentioned before that when it comes to the general fund, we are primarily mandated services, about 85%. If there's questions, I'd happily entertain any questions about this. We can also pull up the detailed backup for any individual department if the board so desires.
All right. Any discussion for Luke on item number one? If not, we'll go to item number two. Item number two, discussion of possible action. Discuss and review plan on what an 18% across the board cut to all general fund departments would look like. Further direct staff regarding the October 18th, 2023 special budget meeting. Director Mornian.
Thank you Chairman. And so I'll try and move through these as quickly as possible so that we can get into the nuts and bolts. But these are largely out of the executive summary that the board was provided. I would just point out that on this first slide, this is our 2024 budgeted general fund expense broken down into three categories of public safety, non-public safety, elected officials, and then the county administration and all of the other county departments. There's a couple of points to be made that we did exclude several large expenses related to mandated services. They're basically uncontrollable costs such as the county's payment to access, the medical examiner's contract, things of that nature. And then within that third line item, the county administration and other departments, I'll point out that that also includes internal services with regards to the expense number as well as to the budgeted FTEs. And so in answer to the board's direction, what does 18% look like for the entire general fund? You can see here it equates to a little over $20 million. It would affect 187 budgeted positions, of which 129 are currently filled. 58 of them are vacant or frozen at this time. But the overall effect of that would be that 18% cuts would impact one in five county employees. It would leave one in six positions vacant because we already have some vacancies. It would push our total vacancy up to about 222 vacant positions. And it would drive the countywide two-year vacancy rate up from 10% up to 16%. And you can see here also that the bulk of that 18% reduction, based on feedback from the departments, would come And so those 18% cuts, if the board were to implement them, would impact service delivery, such things as the ability to deliver mandated public safety and emergency services. It would affect customer service across the board through all departments, things like fewer options for in-person service. We've heard from the treasurer and the assessor that they would need to close their satellite, or excuse me, the assessor and recorder would need to close their satellite offices in Havasu and in Bullhead. Longer wait times, slower response times, things of that nature. And then obviously, there would be an effect on the remaining county employees. We already have a significant vacancy rate over the last several years. Current employees are being asked to do more than what is necessarily in their one-position job description. And so if you remove a significant number of employees on top of that, you can expect that there's going to be an impact to morale. There's going to be reduced efficiency as they're taking on duties that aren't necessarily fully trained for. That will affect work quality, things of that nature. We would also expect that we would see higher rates of attrition and burnout to follow if these measures were implemented. And so when we get down to the department level, and we've broken this down into the same three categories that were on that first slide, you see that public safety overall is 71% of the FY 24 budgeted general fund expense. And when we break that down a little bit further, so law enforcement, and that would include the sheriff on the patrol side, as well as the adult detention facility and the animal control, that is about 40% of the general fund's expense. And the sheriff and the jail commander have indicated to us things, you know, affects slower times, response times to emergency calls, increased overtime expense. They're already incurring a significant amount of overtime expense, sometimes staffing patrol officers to fill shifts in the detention center. They expect officer burnout. A major factor there would be that lower staffing, in some cases would mean you have one deputy responding to a call when there should be two deputies responding, or in the circumstances of the detention facility, less staff on hand, it drives an increase to the risk of the safety of those officers. On the judicial side, this is 17% of the general fund, and so this would include all of our courts and related services. Some highlights from the feedback we received from the departments is that they would need to reduce the bailiff positions from seven bailiffs that we currently have down to four. Those seven bailiffs currently, I believe in Bullhead and Havasu, there's one bailiff being shared across three different courtrooms in each of those locations. This obviously would create some safety issues around court proceedings, especially if you have an unruly person that's looking to cause trouble within that environment. There's also indicated that a decrease in staffing on the court side would absolutely impact the collection of fee revenue. Those employees that are tasked with that, that's not a, I believe, a mandated service to pursue the collection of those fees. And so those employees would be among those that were cut. Probation has told us to expect an adverse impact on public safety. They have required ratios of probation officers per the people that they oversee. They would be hard pressed to meet those ratios, and there could be legal ramifications that would follow. Juvenile detention, much the same, except that they already have some pretty severe shortages in the juvenile detention facility. And they've indicated that if they were required to let more employees go, it could very realistically result in that juvenile detention facility needing to be closed down, which means that those juveniles that are housed there would have to be housed elsewhere outside of the county at significant additional cost. Moving on to prosecution. So this is our county attorney's office. It's 6% of general fund expenses. I think you've heard several times from our county attorney about the difficulties that his department has in attracting qualified attorneys. They already have a significant shared workload among the attorneys that are currently staffed. If they're forced to let any of those attorneys go, that workload increases. It affects how timely they can prosecute felony cases. And it's going to make recruitment and retention even more difficult. And then lastly, on the defense side, and this is our indigent defense services, our legal advocate, legal defender, and public defender, this is about 8% of the general fund expenses. And overall, they would be looking at seven less attorney positions and the loss of five support staff to get to their 18%. This, the most readily apparent side effect of this is that three of those departments work through indigent defense services to refer cases out to outside contract attorneys. And so this reduction in staff would just drive that up through the roof. The county already spends about half a million dollars annually on outside third-party attorneys. We could expect that to increase significantly. And I'll just go back very quickly, because we talked about how the majority of that 20 and a half million decrease would come from personnel. If we move back up to law enforcement, sheriff has indicated he would need to reduce his staff by 33 deputies, a sergeant, 32 detention officers, two detention assistants, and one animal control officer, a total of 69 positions. On the judicial side, you have 43 positions. Among those would be the four bailiffs we mentioned, 14 justice court staff, and then a reduced utilization of the judge pro temps by about one-third. Within the prosecution, the chief deputy attorney and the administrative supervisor there have indicated that in order to avoid needing to let go any of the staff below them, that they would, and their intention would be to resign. And on the defense side, as I mentioned already, seven attorneys and five support staff. When we get down to the remaining elected officials, this is 10% of the general fund budget. And so this is excluding the county attorney, any of the elected judges, and the sheriff. There's pretty widespread impacts here. The assessor and the recorder, as I mentioned, have indicated they would have to close their satellite offices. The assessor would no longer provide in-person customer support services. Those are not mandated, and so that would be among one of the first things to go. Delays in recording and processing documents, so recording in the recorder's office, and then the verification and processing through of those within the assessor's office, that's going to impact things such as the real estate market, title companies, could result in improper ownership records, which then filters down to impacts in the treasurer collecting tax revenue. The assessor has also indicated that they would see adverse impact to the appraisal and valuation of new and improved properties. That is, if there's delays in those properties being assessed or errors in how they are assessed, that absolutely will affect property tax revenue. The delays could result in new properties not being added on to the tax rule until the following year. So you're missing out on a full year of tax revenue there. Just yesterday, I met with the chief deputy assessor. He brought some information to my attention that I do need to share with the board. So they closely watch property valuations. That's one of the key tasks that their office performs. And they have seen in the last 12 to 15 months, they're starting to see a decrease in sales prices. And, you know, we've discussed before in our budget projections, you know, there's a gap between where the assessor values properties and their actual full cash value. And that gap basically allows for year-over-year property tax revenue growth as long as values are increasing or as long as they do not decrease significantly. Countywide, that ratio is about 60%. And so they're limited by statute that the values can only increase 5% a year. So at 60%, you have about eight years of leeway, you know, if that full cash value was to stay the same. With them starting to decrease, and it's about half a percent a month compounded over the last 12 or 15 months, so it's about 7% a year, that can very quickly start to cut into the number of years that it takes for a property to max out at the full cash value. And so we would start to see a decrease in property tax revenue, all else being equal, the rates remaining the same. So that is just something that we will continue to keep an eye on. At this point in time, it does not look to affect any of the five-year projections that we've provided to the board before, but we will be keeping a very close eye on that. And then in the treasurer's office, they've indicated that in order to hit that 18% margin, they would need to only mail out tax dates as they're mandated to. And so the way the law is currently written, they're only mandated to mail property tax statements to properties that are mortgaged, non-mortgaged properties, which is a significant majority of the properties within Mojave County. They would discontinue mailing tax statements. They expect significant wait times at their cashier window if they need to put these changes into place, as well as a much longer time to answer phone calls during those busy tax seasons, likely to even exceed their capacity to deal with the number of calls. It's already a struggle. And then they've also indicated they would need to discontinue the tax deed-in process where they deed parcels to the state, foreclose on them, and deed them to the state. And that would result in no new parcels being made available for that annual tax deed sale that the clerk administers. Among the other services that the treasurer's office provides, accounting, banking, those sort of services, not just for the county and its departments, but for the school districts, the fire districts, the other special districts. And so they would expect significant delays in answering any sort of requests that come from departments across the board. And then our last category, we have the county administration and all of the departments that fall under that via the appointed directors. This is 19% of the general fund budgeted expense for this fiscal year. Very similar impacts, reduced level of services. Public Health has indicated that in order to meet the 18% mandate, they would first look to close the senior centers as that is a significant piece of their budget, and it is not a mandated service that their office must provide. And so that obviously is going to affect a certain group of people within the county. There would also be some degradation to other needs-based programs within other departments. Public Works has, in order to hit their 18%, they would be able to basically put a six-month freeze on hiring into effect. So anytime a position was vacated, they would wait six months to fill that. That would impact facilities' maintenance, certainly. And they would also restructure the five-year capital maintenance program, putting a cap on the annual maintenance costs for the county buildings, as well as a cap separately on the annual expense for the jail major maintenance. The result of that, of deferring maintenance, is obviously going to drive costs up in the long run. Within financial services, I can tell you that every single one of my staff is highly valued. They perform significant roles within the office. If we were forced to downsize on any level, it's very likely we'll be put in a position where we're choosing which vital process do we want to make sure gets done on time? You know, do we want to make sure the employees get paid correctly and timely? Do we want to make sure that the county's bills get paid correctly and timely? Two very distinct and separate processes, but depending on where I was forced to make cuts within the department, something's got to give. The other significant process obviously is our budget. Our budget staff are already pretty taxed. And so if we did see delays in processing accounts payable payments for the bills that the county incurs, a lot of that is going to affect local businesses that are owned and operated by the taxpayers of the county. Animal shelter, we're building a new animal shelter. It's set to be complete this spring, and they've indicated staffing cuts would mean that they would only be able to keep that open four days per week. They're currently open six days per week, so that's a significant decrease in operating hours. And then on the development services side, we've heard that they would expect longer waiting and processing times for permanent review. In their memo, they point out that their permitting activity increased 46% between FY 22 and FY 23. That's a huge jump. And they already struggle to keep up with that with current staffing needs. And building inspections also could take longer to schedule, and they would need to be restricted to certain days of the week in all of the remote or outlying areas. And that is a summary of what we have, what 18% would look like if the board chooses to implement that measure. This time, I'd be happy to answer questions, or we can bring up department directors if you have questions specific to their departments.
All right. Thank you for your presentation, Director Mornian. I open it up to the board. Questions for Director Mornian, for our county manager, for department heads? You know, I would say going through the report, just as an exercise, it sure helps to provide an understanding of all of the different things that Mojave County as an organization does. It's easy to forget. And although all of us may not value everything that the county of Mojave does, everybody values and appreciates at least something that Mojave County does. So obviously, we can't cut too much on the mandated services. I personally feel like we need to protect the internal services after that, that every other county department uses to conduct business. And then it just comes down to tough choices on essential and non-mandated services. But as your report shows, $6.4 million was identified in non-staff-related cuts. Everything else is staff-related cuts. And I thought, you know, everybody did a good job on the report. Public Works Department, they identified just over $2 million of cost avoidance and cost savings with no staff cuts. I was glad to see that. But no matter what we do, it's going to erode service levels, response times, customer service, turnaround times. Not a great place to be.
Chairman, I would, just in response to your observation there, that I believe you said about $6.4 million in non-personnel-related costs, a good-sized chunk of that is training and travel budgets. We saw pretty much across the board from every department, you know, the first place they looked to reach for 18% serving savings was non-personnel-related. And so many departments, you know, you have other outside services where they're paying for services, where they're contracting with a company. And so those usually are pretty hard to decrease, especially if there's a contract involved, you know, until you get to the end of that contract. But across the board, we saw departments basically just wipe out their training budgets. And so that absolutely is personnel-related, because that has an impact not only on employee morale, but on employee efficiency. If you bring somebody in that is, you know, bright, motivated, and you have no means to provide them with training, no means for them to get any sort of professional development, that is absolutely going to impact personnel. It's not only going to impact that person and their career, it's going to impact everybody else that works with them that now is trying to take more time to get them up to speed, or picking up the slack where they are not able to get up to speed using department resources because of the high turnover rate. And it's just something that kind of perpetuates a problem as it goes on. So I just want to make that point.
I don't disagree with your point. However, one, although both of those choices, between cutting staff and cutting training, is not a way you want to, I mean, it's not something you want to have to look at, but at least on one, they're still able to earn a livelihood and take care of their family, hopefully. I mean, let's be honest, everybody here did what they were asked to do. This board asked to go back and look at an 18% cut and then bring that report back, and then here's what it looks like, right? Everybody did what they were supposed to do. The choices that are in front of us, in front of the county manager, in front of you, in front of this policy board, are not easy now. And I, you know, during one of our next meetings, what I'd really like to see happen again is, I feel like we need to have a lot more in-depth, data-driven conversations on fiscal policy. As a conservative, I want to talk these things through on fiscal policy, you know. You look at what's happening at the state legislature and Warren Peterson and the Republicans, I think they've done a great job. They're trying to take business personal property tax to zero. And I think that's a great thing. I want it to go to zero. Because if you look at all of our businesses here in Mojave County, there's a company called YourEconomy.org, and they actually look at what your economy looks like. Over 85% of our business establishments here in Mojave County are between one and nine employees. 99% of them are between one and 99 employees. And all of our small businesses, if they go out and they buy a piece of equipment, they have to, not only do they pay sales tax on the original purchase, but every single year they have to report it, and they have to pay tax again on that same piece of personal business property that they already paid taxes on. They have to do that every year. So I think that should be zero. I also think that property tax here should be lowest as possible. Small businesses, I mean, seniors, everybody, even if you own your property, I mean, I own my property outright, but we not, none of us truly, really own our property, even if we don't have a mortgage on it. Because every single year, there's this little rent payment called property tax. And if we don't pay our rent payment, then the government can come in and they can take our property. And I think that it, the property tax should be as low as it possibly can. And I think that the property tax should be as low as it possibly can. We're also not getting one dime of construction sales tax revenue. I know that I worked with CSA, and just on the very large construction projects, the transportation projects that are going to be going on in the Kingman area in the next 12 months, the West Kingman project, the Rancho Santa Fe project, the Kingman Crossing, Mojave County would receive, I think, about $550,000 in one-time construction sales tax revenues. I'm curious, that would be a question that I would have to, for you, it's not about this 18% report, but countywide, what would order of magnitude estimate be on construction sales tax revenues that we would receive? We're also not receiving Airbnb or hotel that tax right now. I'd be interested to see what that would do to the general fund, but that's for another day. Today, we've got a lot of tough discussions to have, so I'd open it up to the board. Supervisor Cool?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like Director Walsh to come up. I have a question for him. Good morning.
Good morning.
Before 2009, the county did not have countywide building permits. We only had building permits in the overlay areas.
I think it was 2006, was it 2009?
Somewhere around there.
Somewhere in that area, yeah.
So we own, the rural properties were not required to have building permits. They only had a zoning permit that, for the location of the building, and they had a subject tank. And I know we lose 70 cents, you're actually, the taxpayers lose 70 cents on every dollar of building permit. We are only charging 30% of the cost of administering building permits, is what I understand.
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gold, if I may, building permits actually cover the cost to do work, so the building department is funded through fees. And actually, we've had since, I think, 2016, we've had a surplus that has gone back into the general fund. I believe you're referring to zoning permits. So zoning fees, right now, we try and keep them about 30%, covering 30% of their cost, but our zoning fees cover, right now, they're covering about 20% of the cost to do those fee-based services. So building permits are covered entirely by the fees. Zoning fees only cover about 30%, or 20 right now, but we try and keep it about 30% of the cost to do those services.
That seems odd, because I remember before I was on the board, the board adjusted building permit fees, and then after the whaling and gnashing of teeth occurred, then they reduced those fees.
I remember that time very well.
So, was, were the fee, the adopted fees too high?
So what we did at the time, that was about 2017, there was a study done, and we increased both zoning fees and building permit fees. And we had gone through with, working with, initially working with when it was in place, working with the Office of Management and Budget for the county, and did a study, a thorough study on all the permits that we issued, and looked at what the total cost to issue those fees were. Building permits, and I can't tell you right now, but they increased significantly based on that study. Planning and zoning permits also increased significantly based on that study. And as you mentioned, based on the feedback, and we looked and we went back and looked at what those costs were, we were able to see that for building, after we recalled those increases, we went with a 10% increase for building permits, and I think that allowed for, basically, I think it was based at that time on a salary increase for the building inspectors, building plans examiners, to allow for an increase in wages there to be more competitive. So at the time, there was an increase of 10% to the building fees. The planning and zoning fees, we saw an increase, and it wasn't across the board with planning and zoning fees, it was more strategical, looking at bringing that percentage back up to the 30%. So the planning and zoning fees were raised in order to account for 30% of the fee-based services being covered by fees, but the building permit fees were raised 10% in order to adjust for a salary increase, in order to bring their, those salaries into competition with other agencies.
So in summary, the bill we're covering, building permit fees are covering the cost of administering the building permits?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, I'm not hearing anybody anxious to speak, so I'm going to open it up to the electeds first, just to kind of maybe give you an opportunity to talk about the report that you submitted. We'll start with Assessor's Office, the County Assessor.
Morning, Board. Good morning, Chairman. Thank you very much for having me up here. I don't want to have to repeat, Luke did a great job, really giving you a lot of information, but I do have a speech here, and I want to talk to you about. We showed you what 18% budget cut looks like. The Assessor's Office takes pride in submitting a lean budget every year. Thank you for being here. And on our statutory duties of servicing the taxpayers, and we capture the new and existing taxable values under our tax rule, the Assessor's Office takes pride in being efficient, effective, and very conservative in our budget. Since I have been your assessor, we have invested in software that creates more accuracy, pictometry imagery, that allows for efficient appraisals, and we have streamlined our appraisal processes in picking up new construction as soon as possible to be added to the tax rolls in a timely manner. The majority of our budget is made up of staff. In fact, over 73% of our budget is manpower. The International Association of Assessing Officers standards recommends us to have 103 staff members, but somehow, we managed to meet our statutory obligations with only 44. Our office is quite proud of our work, especially when compared to other assessor's offices in the state of Arizona. Our primary role is to discover, list, and identify properties for evaluation purposes. Our office sets the values that property tax is generated from. As such, we must protect our ability to value properties in a timely manner, satisfying statutes and valuing new construction on our future tax rolls. Unfortunately, we are now experiencing a downturn in property values. This is not unexpected. We consider the reduction of a correction to the inflated market of a few, last few years. The consequences of not adding new construction to the tax rolls in a timely manner could result in our limited property values, or the taxable values catching up with our full cash values, as Luke had said, faster than expected and jeopardizing our normal 5% increase in the levy base. Every dollar of new construction that we miss due to not having sufficient personnel will cost us on the tax rolls in more ways than one. I simply cannot wrap my head around cutting a revenue-generating department to get out of a deficit. Besides valuing property, our department provides a plethora of services to the people of Mojave County. Our valued customer service personnel not only provide property information, but in our Lake Havasu and Bullhead offices, our award-winning customer service records documents for the recorders offices as well. Since our customer service positions are not statutory, we would be forced to close the doors to the public in order to keep most of our appraisers, which are statutory. Once our customer service is eliminated, it will create a huge demand on all other phone lines in our entire office, and the demand will increase the workload on all remaining personnel in the offices. This inefficient and ineffective approach will filter down to every staff member, and most likely the rest of the county departments, such as the mailroom and communications. Customer service does not stop at our front doors. With the reduction on our cartography department, we will experience a slowdown in all new development services. Our local developers will not be too happy when all the mapping, plat maps, and subdivisions will end up with slow turnaround times and require all processing through the mail. Our realtors and title companies will be impacted due to our reduction of staff in our system support department, and we most definitely will experience a backlog in conveying property, resulting in old data being sent to the treasurer. We certainly would hate to see a fiasco like we had in 2122. If you remember, we invested in new software, Just Appraised, last year, to help us use artificial intelligence to streamline our system support processes instead of hiring new staff members. Our 18% reduction forces us to eliminate Just Appraised, as well as pictometry, the imagery software. Not only would our deeds process suffer, but our pictometry oblique imagery allows us to perform many appraisals from our desktops, allowing for us to use less resources and less personnel, thus the efficiency we have in the Assessor's Office. This fantastic imagery is used by many departments throughout the county and by the public as well. So while we know these software platforms create efficiencies in our office, we would need to cut them rather than cutting appraisal staff. Finally, but definitely not least, our computer-assisted mass appraisal, KAMA Division, is responsible for maintenance of our, all of our assessment data. Our KAMA department provides data for finance, abstract reporting for developers, levy reports to the treasurer, fire departments in all schools, and even the Arizona Department of Revenue compliance data. The KAMA Division has only three staff members. They do an amazing job, each with a specific job to do. Loss of one employee here would be significant. In addition to maintaining our levy and assessment database, they also create mathematical mass appraisal models that create the value on all improved properties in Mojave County, which ultimately end up on the tax roll. If we reduced our staff in this division, we will experience more than just reduced services to the public. We would even experience compliance issues or equalization orders from the Arizona Department of Revenue, opening the door to a bureaucratic nightmare. We began our budget reduction exercise that you asked for by looking at all non-personnel costs first. We included the loss of three vehicles, software as mentioned, travel, training, paper, ink, water, and even subscriptions. When that was not 18%, we were then forced to cut staff. Ultimately, these significant cuts will only result in poor valuation processes, inaccurate and stagnant levies, and some very upset property owners and constituents. In conclusion, what we provided is a simply not a functional budget. This will result in eight staff layoffs, elimination of our software, and makes us more, that makes us more efficient and effective, reducing our customer service to over-the-phone only, and ultimately, the end effect result in the loss of revenue. There are other options. Please consider them. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Assessor Kench. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Assessor, you spoke of some national group that recommends how many employees you should have.
International Assessing Officers Association, yes.
Is that truly an international organization, or is it a national organization?
It is an international organization, because we've actually had meetings over the borders, and I didn't go to because it was too expensive, but it is an international organization, yes.
So since the various states and countries apparently have different ways that they tax property, when they came up with that recommendation of how many people that you should have, did they take that into consideration that Arizona does not tax personal property the way that some other states do? And if you reflect back to the Christmas Story seasonal show where the father is afraid that the tax assessor is coming, so he's hiding the things in the house so that the tax assessor won't see him, some, many states still do that kind of stuff. So I'm curious, when you come up with a number, does that number have any basis in reality since Arizona doesn't do those kind of things?
Yes, that number actually was zoned into Arizona itself. I can ask my chief deputy, because I know he's got the details on that. Is that true? Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, the, it's basically a white paper that has a lot of different variables that counties can use to calculate what they should have. And so it's locally adjusted for the Southwest, for counties our size, the fact that it's a rural jurisdiction instead of an urban jurisdiction. So there's a lot of variables that can help you to calculate a more accurate number than maybe what South Africa needs for its assessment office.
Since they're taking everybody's property in South Africa, it's probably a different standard than what we operate here in America.
Understood. In essence, though, what it does say, the State Arizona Department of Revenue does recommend we have 103. According to other, that would be one appraiser per 6, 3,000 parcels. We have one appraiser per every 6,000 parcels. So currently, we are more efficient and effective with less, with less employees than all the other counties that are similar to our size in the state.
Are there any states, or any counties in the state that operate at the level that the Department of Revenue suggests?
Yes, there are quite a few.
Interesting. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Other comments from the board?
Assessor Kench, I want to make sure that I heard you correctly. You said that you would need to close satellite offices, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Which offices would you close, and which office would, I mean, I assume that the Kingman being the county seat, that this office would be the...
We would have to have appointments for this office and not have an open door.
Would...
And it would be the other two offices as well.
Offices in Lake Havasu City and your office in Bullhead City would close? And I also heard you say that it would have a huge impact to your office's ability to, to conduct property assessments, which has a direct impact on the county's only revenue stream.
Yes, absolutely. And that's statutory, we have to have, we have to go through our parcels every so many years, statutorily. So we really, it'd be very difficult for us to cut any more of the appraisers at all, because that's obviously what's necessary to get the values on the tax rule.
Thank you.
And statutorily.
And since you're up at the podium, and you have your deputy there, I'm going to ask you a question about the state of Arizona's business personal property tax. So anybody that follows the legislature knows that, I think it was Warren Peterson ran the bill, was it last year? And they're, they're trying to take business personal property tax to zero.
Yes.
As a conservative, as a business owner, I think that it should be zero. I personally don't think that, you know, if you own a small business, and if you look at the data about how our economy is composed, we're all small business here. We have very few really large businesses that have over 99 employees. So we're all small business in Mojave County. If you own a small business, and you go out and you invest in personal property, you know, whatever it is you use in your business, you pay sales tax on that new equipment. And then you have to go out every single year, and you have to identify all your property again, every single year, and you have to pay personal property tax on that again. You have to pay tax every single year on property that you've already paid tax on, again and again and again. And they're trying to take it to zero. I think it should be zero, because I don't think that's right.
They're working on it. They have got it down to about a 2.5 depreciation rate right now, which is the lowest we've ever seen. We might see those numbers change, but it's going to take a while for it to filter out, for us to see a real huge impact all at once. But do expect as a county that we aren't going to be getting that revenue in.
That was my first question. Have, has your office done any sort of an analysis on what the fiscal impact is going to be on Mojave County with the new rates? And, you know, this next session, I would, if I was betting, guess that those same legislators are going to try to take it to zero. I personally support that. I know that it hurts the county. But from a business standpoint, small business standpoint, I think it's the right thing to do. They shouldn't be paying tax on personal property every single year. I think that's wrong. But you've done some calculations on sort of the fiscal impacts of that? Do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Speaking of the microphone?
Yeah, when the law was first being kind of prepared, there was a state request for all the counties to do that work. And I think I recall that, well, first to lay the groundwork, that the law that was passed makes it so that any new asset that comes online, it's only taxed at 2.5% of its acquisition value. So if you have something worth 100 bucks, the starting point is $2.50. Then there's, you know, it gets lower and lower due to the process of the way taxes work. That's on any new assets coming on. So the analysis was about what ramification that would have over time. Basically, we figured out it would take about eight years to flush out what assets most business owners currently have until they replace those assets. New assets come online, and they're affected by that new law. And so while it's not a this-year impact because of the new law passed, certainly in about eight to 10 years, that, that set of value that we can currently levy against is going to be almost gone. And given the fact that... And given the fact that every year there's new law that's being proposed to eliminate it, probably within the next eight years, there might be something that even gets rid of that 2.5%.
Yeah. Well, I personally think, I hope they do, because I have several friends that are business owners that are paying literally tens of thousands of dollars in, in, you know, that personal property tax for business every year. I don't think that that's appropriate, but it doesn't really have anything to do with this. Thank you for that. Any other questions for the assessor's office?
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Isn't there a, a set amount of, of personal property they can have that's not taxed? How much has that been raised up down?
About 250,000?
Yeah, it's, it changes, it changes every year. I'm not sure the number, but you're correct. And it's relatively large because it's how much assessed value that remains. And so I think it's in the $200,000 range. So a lot of very small businesses are currently exempt. They, they're below that level.
All right. And every time that we do, the state does another one of these exemptions or lowers the business property tax, that puts it on to the homeowner. That's all. Thank you.
That's right. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll call up the county attorney. County Attorney Smith, are you in the, there he is. Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Chairman Lingenfelter, esteemed board, Madam Clerk, Mr. County Manager, Mr. Espin. I think that the board has a very difficult job in front of us, and it's a very somber atmosphere that we're all working under today. And you can feel it, you can feel the tension, you can feel the tension with county employees right now who are running around scared. And I lost one of my best attorneys, and I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, and it's something that's come up a couple of times, including when we tried to get board approval to hire for that position. And this attorney was also on city council here in town, so his identity is not a secret. He'd been with us for four and a half years, and first year, year and a half, he was doing misdemeanors, moved into felonies, very hungry young prosecutor, and somebody who came to me a lot with questions regarding serious felony cases. And in a short time, in about three years, he's tried more than 22 felony cases, including the case involving a DPS officer who was shot after somebody actually turned the tables on him, started following him on the road, and had a machine gun compared to his ordinary firepower that he had, and chased the officer down, rode after him, and actually shot him. And this prosecutor handled that case even though he's only been with us, our office at that time for about four years. And I talked to him yesterday for a little over an hour, and I wanted to find out why he was leaving. And he told me that it was because of what had happened recently with the hiring freeze and the fact that the other day, he was looking online and he thought, my quality of life right now with me and my girlfriend has not been great because we are a little understaffed, and I'm doing a lot of trials, and I have trials stacked up back to back to back with no relief. So I go out of town, and, and Mr. Smith, you told me, you need to go out of town, you need to go out of town this weekend, take your girlfriend out, get out of town for a while, enjoy life. And I did that. I go out on a Friday, and we're out till Saturday, we go to Vegas. The whole time, I'm thinking about the fact that I got to come in like I do every Sunday, which I do see him in the office on Sundays frequently, and I have to prepare for the next trial. And there are just no end in sight, they're backed up. And this year, we've already hit over 80 felony trials. And that number might not mean anything to you because you don't know how many trials we do. I can tell you, one week we had five. We only have four divisions that do criminal trials. One division did two one week, and we also had a felony bench trial that week. So we're doing trials at an unprecedented rate. We're doing trials more than any other county, and you might have questions about that. We could speak about that philosophically, why have the number of trials gone up? And I'm going to circle back to that in a minute. But ultimately, he talked about that and the quality of life for him and his girlfriend, and the stress that he's under and that there's no end in sight. And he looked on the website, and this was a temporary thing, but for a while, HR had taken down our ability to post for a position. And he thought, I can't even pretend that there's help on the horizon. They can't post, they can't even hire. And so he ended up interviewing with Pinell County, who are flush, and he took a job down there, and today's his last day. Overall philosophically, I, I know the board's position. I'm a fellow Republican. I'm an elected official, just like the board is. I know that you have a tough decision in front of you today. I know some of the options that are available to you, and I know how most of you stand on most of those. I also know that 40% of our board, bookends here on the board are former law enforcement officers. So you understand the position that law enforcement is in, the whole law enforcement system, and how important it is. Regarding our budget, I will tell you that Lisa Samstag, our office manager, who put her job on the line along with James Schottman, who are not dispensable employees, that she does more than anybody else, I believe, in the county, and I'm going to put that out there, to save money in every possible area, from paperclips to paper to personnel, everything imaginable. She's like her own procurement department. She could come up here and you have any questions, she'd be much better able than I am to answer those questions about what she does on a daily basis. Everything she does is geared towards saving money. We do not have any fat in our budget. We have gone paperless now. There's still some paper, but we're mainly paperless, and we're ahead of the curve as far as where the other counties are in the state of Arizona regarding going completely paperless. Our attorneys go to court with laptops. We are cutting down and not using paper hardly at all. It's made me a dinosaur because I'm technologically inept. As far as our overall budget in the county and the necessity for law enforcement, as I suggested, we have multiple members that are former law enforcement. And I know this is going to sound maybe a little inane, a little over the top, but crime is not something that's ever going to stop. People are going to continue to commit crime. The amount of crime has gone up, just as our population has gone up. And we need trained law enforcement officers that are experienced, and we need a fully-staffed sheriff's office in order to catch people and deter people from committing crimes. A lot of law enforcement is deterring crimes. It's that presence out there. It's seeing the DPS officer, the sheriff's officer out on the highway, and it reminds us, hey, we need to slow down. It's deterrence. It's catching people that commit crimes. It's the detective bureau in every law enforcement agency, including all our police departments. And then, after we catch criminals, we need to have a prosecuting office that's fully-staffed in order to decide who needs to be prosecuted, and is this something that's really that serious? Do we need to prosecute these crimes? Is there enough evidence? And we also want to have an independent evaluator, a trained prosecutor, who's going to look at it and say, I don't think there's sufficient evidence, or I'm not sure this person committed this crime. These are very important safeguards that people need to have, our citizens, and everybody knows. You, as a board of supervisors, sit in here, and I'm going to say it, you endure every couple of weeks at the call to the public, you have people come in here and attack you personally. Now, they have the right to speak on a variety of issues, but they also come in here and go after you individually, personally. And as time has gone on, I've seen the impact that it's had, where you have come out and now you take the time and you have the opportunity to explain yourself, and you go back at those people and you say, hey, wait a minute, that's not accurate, that's not true. It takes a board majority in order to do any action with the board of supervisors. It's not me individually. And we have people that accuse one supervisor of, of doing something that they're not capable of doing, because you have to have a consensus, you have to have a vote. And you know what it's like to be falsely accused of things. And our citizens have the right to be defended, which is why we have a public and legal defender's office and an injured defense service, because people have the right, under the Constitution, under the Fifth and Sixth Amendment, to be defended. And there are times when there are false accusations that are made, just as you have to deal with, where you have victims that make up things. You've got child custody issues where people start accusing the other offending spouse of child abuse. We see those type of things. And you need to have trained prosecutors who will look at that and work with law enforcement and weed out the actual criminal acts from people that are being falsely accused. And then, of course, most importantly, you need to have prosecutors that are trained and experienced that can prosecute the crimes that are being committed every single day. Crime is not going to stop, and we need trained law enforcement, trained prosecutors, and trained defense attorneys in order to handle this burden. And you also need the court system, the arbiters, the referees, the judges that are fair and impartial and sit over these trials and make sure that justice is carried out. And they also have to decide what an appropriate punishment is. And all of these things are things that we need. And whether or not you believe in big government or small government, whether or not you have a libertarian bent to your philosophy, or are just elected Republican officials, as I am, but we all know that we want law and order, and that in order to do that, we need to spend some money doing it. And at this time, with what's going on, morale is poor. Morale is poor in every department. Everywhere you go and you talk to people in the county, you see the impact it's having on employees. They're scared right now. And so I, along with what our assessor just said, am asking you to look for some alternative solutions here. It can't just be about cuts. We need to have more revenue. We have to have another revenue stream right now. Because right now, as you're asking us to come up with an 18% budget cut and to reduce further down where we're at with our staffing, because these cuts are going to come out of personnel, which we cannot do right now. But population is growing. Our county, when we hit over 200,000, went from a three-person board to a five-person board. Additionally, we know that it is likely that our census, the next time we have a census, that we're going to be over 250,000 people in Mojave County. As population grows, the need for services grows, and cutting revenue and having a reduced revenue stream is not going to be able to keep up with the services that we need to provide. And these services are essential, and I'm sure that probably everyone, if we were to ask every one of you as board members, every one of you have probably been victims of a crime yourself, or in your family or close personal friends. It happens to everybody, and it's not going to change. I thank you for your time today and appreciate the, the task that you have and the attention that you're paying to everybody.
I'd open it up to questions for Attorney Smith.
Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Johnson.
Looking at the presentation that Finance did, I see that legal defender, public defender have a larger portion of the budget than the county attorney's office?
I, I didn't look at those numbers, but I, that sounds probably...
It appeared it was that way, so I guess, as far as I see, so the taxpayers who are paid for defense from you, your office, get less money than the people that get free services for, that can't afford their legal defense. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Other comments for Attorney Smith?
Mr. Chair, I have a question with him. We asked for this 18% cut exercise to be presented to us a week in advance. We all had it. Unless there's a, the parvoret head that's going to come up here and say, oh, I made a mistake and I can cut 20% and not do a problem. I don't know why we're having them all speak to us. That was all.
Fully noted. I do have a couple of questions for you. It's one thing to see something on paper, it's another thing to be able to have an opportunity to interact with you. That would probably make for a long letter if you had to answer all those questions in writing. I agree with you. Population growth and the fact that Mojave County has several very popular destinations, there's always going to be a certain percentage of bad actors that your staff have to deal What's the impact of losing your two top positions? You mentioned Mr. Schottman and, and the other employee. What's the impact of losing those two top positions on your workflow? And secondary questions would be, under that, will it have, or would it have an impact on cases you choose to prosecute? Would you, would your office be forced to perhaps not prosecute property abatements, which we've heard a lot about, or even things that are nonviolent like theft, under a certain amount, as we've seen in places like San Francisco? Just asking the question.
Thank you. Chairman Lingenfelter, board. There was multiple questions. I'll try to answer all of them, and can remind me if I forget to answer one of them. We do have a wide variety of services that we provide, and following up on what Supervisor Johnson had mentioned, we're, I'm talking mainly about the prosecution side, but obviously, we have someone who serves as advisor to the board. We are civil division, you're dealing with all the elected officials and the department heads. But specifically talking about James Schottman. James Schottman is one of the best attorneys in Mojave County. He's phenomenal. Some of you have actually dealt with him over the years. I know that Chairman, that you have, and you've had dealings with him over the years. I know Supervisor Johnson has had a lot of dealings with James over the years. I think Supervisor Bishop has, and also with your ties with the sheriff's office, because James was the sheriff's attorney for some time. And this was kind of a tug-of-war between me and Sheriff, former Sheriff Sheehan, where I had lunch with Tom years ago, and he told me that James had applied for a job at his office, and I just shook my head. And he goes, what? I go, no, you can't have him. He goes, okay, okay, I'll back off, I'm not going to go after him. Within three days, he had hired him. So it's the only time that, that Tom ever did anything like that. I, I was not happy about it. And after he left, I went over to the sheriff's office one day, and we had an opening with Jace Zach after over 30 years of service, and many of you probably remember Jace, when he retired, and I went over there and I was able to poach him back. He's an incredible attorney. He handles a full caseload. He goes to court once a week and does the officer of the day where he handles court all day long, just like every other attorney. He is in the charging rotation often and charges cases. When we lose attorneys like Attorney Cameron Pat, who's also a city council member, that the city of Kingman is also going to lose, James takes over a bunch of those cases as well. He still does jury trials, and he's one of the best criminal attorneys that we have, as well as helping me with running the office on a day-to-day basis, hiring decisions, personnel decisions, discipline of employees, the whole gamut of things. Absolutely incredible, and not somebody that we could lose. The only person that would be more indispensable, and I'm a lot more dispensable than James is, would be Lisa Samstag. And the quickest way to answer your question to get to the point is that about nine months ago, James walked into my office one day, stood in front of me, and said, if we ever lost Lisa, we'd be dead. And then he turned and walked away and left the office. She is somebody that understands every single facet of our operation, from handling the budget, being our, her own procurement department, as I mentioned earlier, taking care of the vast staff that we have. We have more staff overall. We have about 60-some employees, and only about 24 of them are attorneys. And she runs the rest of them, including overseeing our victim-witness division, which are mandated services. There is no way that we could function without her. We'd be completely lost. We don't have anybody that has her expertise. She's got a college degree, prior business, as Chairman, you mentioned, small business experience, bigger business experience, and she, she is absolutely indispensable to what we do. We just don't have anybody that could ever take her place, that understands the complex... We just don't have anybody that could ever take her place, that understands the complexities of the budget, all the grants that we have. We have a large number of grant employees as well, and she understands every facet of our operation.
The only other question I had that I didn't hear an answer to is, if you had to lose those folks, would it have an impact on the cases that you choose to prosecute as county attorney?
I think that goes more to the overall hiring freeze and whether or not we will get exemptions going forward, like we have. But I don't know the answer to that question, but, you know, we just lost Cameron to Pinell County. We lost another attorney, Rod Albright, who worked for us for about 17, 18 years, and he retired. And we lost a younger attorney to the JAG Corps, so he's going and serving our country. It's hard to get upset about seeing something like that. But one of our top prosecutors also, Amanda Claire Hout, just had a baby yesterday, on her due date. So she did 13 felony trials last year and won Prosecutor of the Year for the state of Arizona. And she's on maternity leave for two and a half months. So if we were in a position where we had to cut any other attorneys in that, we would probably very quickly, especially if we lost anybody else, be in a position where we might have to decide, we can't prosecute drug cases anymore. We would have to prioritize, or maybe we're not going to do misdemeanors anymore. Or the time that it takes to do those things would result in justice being delayed. And justice being delayed is often seen as justice being denied. Right now, to give you a specific number, we have 175 felony cases that we're behind in reviewing, and we've made that a priority. And with the recent loss of Cameron Pat, it's going to be real tough to get up to date on that. So basically what we have is we have an attorney every week that does charging for that week. And that attorney reviews the cases that comes in. And as time goes on and our attorneys get more and more cases and they start having to do more and more trials, they get behind at times on their reviews. And right now, we're 175 felony reviews behind right now, so.
Well, the reason I ask the question is every single board meeting we have, or we have had a number of abatements, and I know that those have to work through a process. Some of those, you know, they end up in front of your office. It's important to the citizens here that those abatement cases are prosecuted. I mean, from what I've heard. So that's why I asked the question. I'd hate to see anything happen where we're not able to any longer prosecute those abatement cases due to workforce or, you know, staffing or whatever. And also hopefully, you know, the shoplifting cases and things like that, you know, we don't want to turn into something that other places have done where they just sort of slap them on the wrist or something, so. Any other questions for County Attorney Smith?
Supervisor Ghul.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County Attorney Smith, I was trying to look at your budget here, and I meant no disrespect by conferring with the budget director, but your, the way that they reconcile your budget includes grants, so it varies by millions of dollars year to year, which makes it hard to figure out what your budget increase has been over the last few years. But I will note that your full-time employees in '22 actual were 61.2, and now you're at 68.6, two years later. So I just wanted to let the public know that we're not starving you out, that you have seen an increase. You also, just for reference, you made a comment about the number of supervisors and that that was attributed to growth. In reality, that's not attributed to growth. That's attributed to the action of the legislature, who reduced that number to mandate five supervisors from 500,000 to 200,000. And that was a political game that they were playing with Pinell County. So that's not directly attributed to growth. It's attributed to a game played by the legislature. But I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Judge Moss, did you want to come up and give some brief comments?
Well, gonna try. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, county managers, elders. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The, before I forget, the young attorney that Mr. Smith was talking about, his name was said, Cameron Pat, he was one of the young attorneys that I and other judges were looking at, thinking that he was going to be replacing us someday, because that's at such a high level he was working. So we do think about succession planning on occasion, and his leaving was a loss to Mojave County. When it comes to the issues that are before you, I don't envy you. I used to be up there, doing what you're doing now. And I think there are some data points which create some hardship when it comes to the board's decision-making process. It's not easy. Some of those data points are, if I remember what my elementary school in Phoenix said, Mojave County is the second-largest county by landmass in Arizona. If Wikipedia is correct, we're the fifth-largest when it comes to population. And if I remember a comment made several months ago before this board correctly, as from a county government perspective, we collect, I think, third to last, in other words, we rank 13th in taxes. Those data points are in conflict with one another. They don't mesh. Larger surface area means larger area that law and order has to be provided to. Services have to be provided. More population means the same thing. By 2030, our population is going to be north of 250,000, if the U.S. Census Bureau is correct anyway. And when it comes to revenue, well, revenue is directly tied to the services that you could provide to our population. The court system as a whole, whether it's a superior court, the clerk's office, probation, et cetera, is about 200, give or take, employees within the county. Some of those data points within our employees kind of tie hands. Half of the judicial employees are related to probation, and that's divided between juvenile and adult probation in addition to the juvenile detention center. More probation employees are funded by the state or fee or grants than are by the general fund. Speaking around numbers, it's 60 to the state and 40 to the county. Of those 40, 20 is the juvenile detention center. And the juvenile detention center costs a lot of money, but it actually saves expenditures because you don't have to send people out of county, which would cost more, which is why the board approved a juvenile detention center many years ago. When it comes to the portions that are funded by the state, they expect a maintenance of effort. Just saying we're going to cut and we're not going to, we're going to try to be subsidized by the state further, isn't going to fly when outside agencies review what's going in Mojave County. We're not isolated when it comes to providing probation services. There are other agencies which are involved and other funding sources which are involved, and they would take a dim view. And the phrase I was told by the executive director of the administrative office of the courts is that there's a maintenance of effort. This is a partnership. This is where you don't get to unilaterally hand off responsibility to the job that needs to be done. When it comes to the clerk's office and the judiciary as a whole, the vast bulk of our budget is employees. We don't have tractors and barrels of concrete and all the rest of that kind of stuff. It's people. We are a people-oriented organization because what we sell is time, staff time, judge time, defense and prosecutor time, law enforcement time. And the fewer people we have, the less time we have, and we're more likely to get in trouble. When it comes to the clerk's office, I think it's 95% of the budget is staff. Only 5% are things like paper clips and computers and things of that nature. And if you say cut 18%, when they're already understaffed, that's not feasible. I won't try to belabor the point, but the Mojave County judiciary is already working at capacity. It would not be a good decision to say that we have a budget emergency, which is true, you have it, but now we're going to take away 18% of what you have available to the general fund. There will be knock-on consequences to that, which would be adverse. For example, I think I spelt this out of my letter, if the justice, the work doesn't go away. The work is there. You may say I want to cut 18%, but that doesn't mean 18% of the work gets cut. The work is there and it's growing. When it comes to the work, we still have to process cases. We still have time standards that need to be complied with. And that means if we have to reshuffle departments, we are going to focus on our core responsibility, which is processing cases. And the justice court judges have already said if they have to, and the courts would oppose this, but if they had to, they would have to start cutting out of their collections department because they can't stop accepting cases out of the window. They can't say, oh, we're putting off your case until next year. We have to have a trial. And so that means not all of this goes to the general fund, but upwards of $5.2 million could be impacted, which is what, if my memory serves correctly, our justice courts collect. And I think it's, I'm going by memory, it's roughly $2 million or so that goes to the county. And because our core function is not to collect fines, our core function is to be judges, process court cases, try to do justice in an affair impartial, and most of all, timely manner. Time counts. There was a very famous jurist, which just about every case involving these things is repeated constantly, justice delayed is justice denied, because people don't need this sort of democles hanging over their head when their life, liberty, and property is at issue for months or years. They're supposed to get their day in court quickly. When it comes to judicial workload, every judge is working at capacity. It's not just jury trials, which we're setting records in, and we get mentioned at state meetings all the time. They're wondering what's in the water at Mojave County. We're doing so many of those. It's bench trials. Our jury trials is a fraction of the bench trials that we have. Family law cases, divorce cases, custody cases, cases based out of equity, delinquency cases, they're all bench trials. Our judges are at capacity. That's not to say, when I say that we have, the courts are stressed, the judicial system is stressed, this branch of government is stressed, that we don't understand the problems of the board. We are willing to work with you. We are willing to try to find some relief somewhere. That's going to take discussions, but it's not something the court system can control. We have, for example, suggested that maybe we can maximize and increase some fines and fees that would be part of the court system, which may give money to the county. The difficulty with that is twofold. Right now, Mojave County, when it comes to the fees that are charged, is near the top within the state of Arizona. And if we were to do that, we would have to have the approval of the administrative office of the courts, and they're taking a very jaundiced view of where we're at already. They could, perhaps, because I've been having discussions, I've been trying to find a way out of the mousetrap, or at least a partial way out of the mousetrap that we're in, they would be willing to entertain the discussion. I can't guarantee a delivery of it because it's not something out of, in my control. I can suggest, I can try to be persuasive. Other people have final say. We are willing to, example, once, I think I've had conversations with Sam on this, and we hope the data will be available in December, where we can convert a commissioner position into a superior court position because our county population would support that, and that would take roughly $122,000, give or take, off the general fund. So we can do things like that around the side. We can also, if you think that we're not efficient, and I have shared the data with you, which indicates everything but, we're consistently number one across the board when it comes to objective data points. But if you think there's fat within the judicial system, whether it's detention, whether it is the probation department, whether it's the clerk's office, the superior or the limited jurisdiction courts, we are willing to bring in an outside entity to come through and say, oh, you guys have a lot of guys goofing off and taking a lot of fishing vacations over here. You don't need them. Or you could do X, Y, and Z. That will help improve your efficiencies and maybe save some money. I will say, I think that's unlikely for two reasons. One, when it comes down to it, we are constantly engaged in that process already. We just had the National Center of the State Courts come in and review our criminal processes, about how we could process more cases faster. They made some recommendations. We are in the process of implementing those recommendations. That's not something that happens in isolation. We do that all the time because we take pride in being the best, and being the best means you don't sit on your laurels. You constantly look for things that you can do better. We lead the state on video appearances. You know, when it comes down to brass tacks, when it comes to the civil and other sides, unless it's an evidentiary hearing, we have attorneys appearing all around the world remotely via Zoom, and we're getting hearings in faster because of that. I believe that in the event, we had another program that was set up to come in and bring in an outside agency to look how the judges are operating, what can we do to make things better? And we put that on hold because it was $30,000, and we were told, stop spending money that wasn't absolutely necessary. So we put a kibosh to that, but that was supposed to start in January of '24. So it's not like the courts are attempting to be wasteful or not. Historically, the courts have always been very conservative. All the data, whether it's case filings, trials, et cetera, the money spent from the general fund within our court system has us ranked number one on a per capita basis. And that's why we would invite an outside agency to come in and look at us from top to bottom, if you folks are willing to pay for it. I think the National Center for State Courts does that quarter stuff. I'd be saying, if you do that, you're juggling dynamite because I suspect they're going to say we're underfunded and understaffed, but, but we're willing to do that. We're not willing, we're not trying to say no. We're trying to say 18% cuts, no, won't happen.
Thank you, Judge Moss, for your comments. I'd open it up to the board. Any questions for Judge Moss?
Judge Moss, I have one question.
Sure.
Supervisor Johnson may remember this, but I know that the courts here have not always had a solid, friendly relationship with Mojave County. I remember many years ago, when there was a former presiding judge, Randall Bartlet, who actually, I think, threatened Mojave County to sue if the court opined that the court was not satisfying the maintenance of effort that you mentioned. And correct me if I'm wrong, this might be a difficult question, but did I read that sort of being alluded to in your letter as well? Did you reserve that right?
I tried to be very nice and gentle in it because a presiding judge who plays those games and is himself juggling dynamite, because this is supposed to be a cooperative effort. We're not a department of Mojave County. We are the third branch of government. We are a branch of government. And if our essential functions are being impaired, if our time standards are being impaired, if we can't do our jobs without potentially violating people's rights, yes, things could happen. I think Gary Pope, Judge, former parole, even before Judge Bartlet, was involved in a conflict with the Board of Supervisors that was even worse, and we're trying to avoid that. But effectively, what happens if things went to a, not saying I would do this, not saying I won't do this, but if it comes down to the point where there's a real clash, I felt I had no choice, and after consultation with the administrative offices of the courts, I would enter an administrative order. You folks would then have the right to file a special action from the Supreme Court to say Judge Moss is acting in an arbitrary, capricious manner, and try to undo that administrative order. And the case history is about 50-50. If presiding judges are acting like tyrants and saying, we're doing it this way, and you can't, you don't have any say, the Supreme Court usually overturns the presiding judge's decision. If the presiding judge is attempting to work with the board and is being transparent and establishes the need, they tend to support the presiding judge's decision.
Well, I ask that question because I do remember that time, and it was not a good time.
It was not.
And I don't want to see Mojave County ever go back to that time.
And I don't want it either, which is why I'm trying to bend over backwards and saying, we'll work with you. We want to be a partner. You look at the statutes involving the court positions, they're entangled. The presiding judge's position and the Board of Supervisors are entangled. Some statutes, like for probation, it kind of reads like the presiding judge says, we need this probation officer, here's the salary, pay it, and you get no say. Of course, we don't do it that way because that's not proper, and that's not, that's not being a... And that's not, that's not being a cooperative branch of government. Others say that the presiding judge's proposes, and the board, I won't say decides, but it has sort of an input on the process. It's almost like Senate confirmation hearings. And so it's a more cooperative, cooperative process. Some are absolutely mandatory, and you can look at judges and judicial assistants because they're outlined in the Constitution. But, so there's these floating targets. And what they exactly mean, well, depends on efficiency and necessity. And it's usually a case-by-case basis. So I don't want to tell you what I'm going to do because I don't know what you're going to do. And so we will find out as time goes on. But we want to be partners, and that's why I'm here speaking. That's why I'm here sharing all the information I have, we have. That's why I'm opening the doors to the courthouse and the judges' chambers and saying, come tell us where we're being wasteful.
Thank you. Any other questions for Judge Moss? Mr. Chair?
Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Moss, can you tell me why Kingman has its court open all day, but Bullhead and Havasu are closed for two and a half hours a day?
Staffing, primarily. If, one of the things the clerk would do if cuts were enacted, they would close the front windows in Lake Havasu and Bullhead City. That means no filings would be taken there. Order of protections would have to be routed to the Kingman courthouse because they're understaffed. Every time we hire someone, they get hired away by someone else. And so we can never keep a full staff. The law is, we have to keep Kingman open. So as staffing problems happen in Kingman, clerks are taken out of Havasu and Bullhead and redirected to Kingman. It doesn't mean if the clerk, front office clerks, were removed from Bullhead and Havasu, the courthouses would close there. They'd still do trials and hearings and things like that. It's just that the public would not be able to go down the road and file their paperwork at that time. So primarily, it's staffing.
Not saying that window people aren't as qualified as the staffing people for your courtroom, but wouldn't that be kind of an entry-level position where they accept the paperwork and do that? Where those things could be staying open?
I am not, I have administrative oversight of the clerk's office. I don't run their day-to-day operations. So I don't want to say that one clerk is better than another clerk. There are different types of clerks. There's record clerk, courtroom clerks. There are front, front-window clerks. Their duties are different. The front-window clerks, for example, take the filing fees. You don't want them to charge too less because they don't know what the proper fee is to be charged. I do, maybe Chris, our clerk of the court, would like to speak on qualifications. But I would say the gold standard, I would agree with you, is the courtroom clerk. They're the ones who take the minutes and make sure that the exhibits are handled appropriately. But I would not say one clerk is more important than the other. I would say clerk duties are different, and they're all important. And I'll introduce you to our clerk, Spurlock.
Judge Moss is way better at this than I am. Our front-counter window positions are our entry-level positions. So they do start at sixteen oh five an hour. And that's basically fifty-one percent of all of my staff are entry-level positions. Does that answer your question?
But you're not able to hire enough people? That's why we don't have the, I mean, because we have people that come in and then, you know, they try to come in early in the morning, and they try to come in on their lunch hour and, you know, or they try to get off work a little early and wear clothes. And I get that question all the time. So I was just curious why, and it only seems to be in Bullhead and Havasu.
Our satellite offices, like Judge Moss had mentioned before, are not required by statute to be open. And because we only have two staff members in those offices, we have to close so that they can get a lunch. Because otherwise, you know, then I'd be in trouble with the federal government for not giving my staff lunches and breaks.
All right. Thank you, that's all.
It's interesting to note that a lot of the reductions that have to, or would have to occur under this exercise, those of us that are lucky enough to represent half of Kingman, it's less of a burden on us. And the service reductions are going to happen in our two most populous places, Havasu and Bullhead, right now. And people that live in Kingman, which is actually, you know, we have four incorporated cities, but Kingman is, is not as big as Havasu, is not as big as Bullhead. But their, their level of service isn't going to be as impacted as much because we're the county seat, and all our offices are here. So it's just the way it happens.
I think if the front windows closed at these courthouses in Bullhead and Lake Havasu, just like if the offices closed and the assessors and tax office, et cetera, and the satellite, things that will generate a lot of outcry and upset from the public. But that's just me, and that's not my decision to make.
Any other questions? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Judge Moss, I just wanted, for the record, to say that you've had twenty-two percent in full-time employee growth in the last two years in the Superior Court. And you've had a twenty percent increase in the clerk's office. So it's not like these are, have been long-term, that we've been starving you out over a period of time. You guys have had both growth in full-time employees and growth in budgets.
That is true because the growth was justified by the work. So, but yes, we have been growing because the work has been growing. And I think I gave some data in one of those letters I sent back in August on that. So we're not growing for the sake of growth. We're not the federal government.
My point being that you are growing, your budget is growing, the clerks are growing, and the clerk's budget is also growing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you all very much. If you want to have any further conversation, I think you all know my phone number, please reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the sheriff? Sheriff, if you want to come down, just really quick, I have, if you want to say something brief, and then I have a question for you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board. Good morning. You know, to reiterate what's being said would just waste everybody's time. This is going to be a long, anyhow. I'll simply say this. The decisions that are made by this board are more impactful than many people realize. We had a balanced budget this year. We asked for a pay increase to finally get our staff to a level that we could maintain instead of constantly losing employees. Within six weeks of that adopted final budget, a hiring freeze was put on. We had four applicants that were certified officers, that were really the right people for the job, that bowed out because of the instability in their belief of the county. So there's a lot of outliers to the problem we're facing. And quite honestly, I'm going to say this. I'm in a political position, but I'm not a politician. This year has been the most frustrating, frustrating year of my career. I sat back two weeks ago or three weeks ago and said, I'm being asked to give this board the information necessary to defund my agency, and that's ridiculous. You've seen my memo. We would have to cut thirty-three deputy sheriffs. We would have to cut thirty-two detention officers. Yeah, I was angry. But then I'm going to, I'm going to add this. I stepped away from this, and I think this is actually a good thing. The reason I believe this is a good thing is we talk, we talk, we talk. There's that unknown. You now have in front of you, from every department, a written and verbal understanding of what it takes to run that agency at low staffing levels. If I was completely staffed, as you've heard me say many times, we're still well below what we need. I've also made this point. The cost of business continues to grow exponentially. When you look at my jail budget, twenty-six percent of that budget is inmate healthcare fees. That contract has grown four million dollars over the last four years. We look at that and we say, it's the cost of doing business. Well, I'm here to tell you, your employees should be treated as the cost of doing business. The thought of cutting staff is reprehensible to me. We're all running on shoestrings. But I will again reiterate, when I took a big step back from this kind of a ten-thousand-foot view, this now gives you, the board, and the department heads, and the elected officials, and the public, the opportunity to say, this is the cost of doing business. This is the revenue we're bringing in. Okay, from there, you'll have to make a decision. But I can tell you, if you cut the sheriff's office by any percentage, you're going to damage law enforcement. Last thing I'll say, before I even looked at personnel, I went to the items in my budget that I was able to cut. Bullets, bulletproof vest replacement, personal radios, portable radios. That accounted to point seven-seven percent, not even one percent of the budget. It was ineffective. It was nothing. We had to remove all vehicle replacements from our budget. Many of the fees that I pay are internal service fees. I have no control over that. Those are set. Each year, they're set. And I'm responsible to pay it, and it's at a budgeted amount. So the last thing I will say on it very simply is, I don't envy your position, but this will cut law enforcement at the knees, and you are going to put people's lives in jeopardy. I strongly oppose this, and I hope this was just an exercise in an attempt to determine where we need to go from here. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Is there any questions from the board?
Madam Chairman.
Go right ahead.
Sheriff Schuster, in the last two years, you had twenty-eight percent budget growth and five percent growth in full-time employees. And I'm not picking on you. I pointed that out to everybody that's come up here, that you've had growth in both your budget and your number of employees in the past two years.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, yes. And if you recall, since I took office in two thousand seventeen, each year I've asked for additional staffing and increases the salary. And that's specific to the fact that we are, we were a training agency. We had vacancies coming in every year higher than any other agency in the county. That was kind of my point when I said we finally got our, our salary up to a level it needs to be. And ironically, when we talk about money, once we got to that point, the applications started coming in again. Okay, we are getting good, qualified applicants. So it's clear to me, if we stay competitive, we're going to do okay. So yeah, our budget has gone up across the board. Our budget's gone up because there are always going to be costs to do the job. And there's always going to be expenses that we, we just have to pay. They're out of my control. But I appreciate your point, yes. And you gave me your five percent staff increase. Let's work on about seventy percent more, and we'll get there. That'd be great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Buster, I know you've got something. Come on. Nothing?
Supervisor Angus.
Okay, yeah, we've, we've worked with you for those problems that we have really worked hard over the years. And, and no one's really talking again because we've done this at so many meetings. And like Supervisor Johnson, I, I, we got all this material in the back. And I'm sorry that, you know, we have to hear. But I think in the long run, it's good. It's good for everybody to hear how much we do with relatively little. Eighteen percent of your whole tax, property tax bill, the property tax, the property owners in Mojave County pay, burden the expense of running this entire county, less grants and things like that. But I, I think that staff has done a tremendous job. And I've grown over the years because I came in all full of piss and vinegar as a Republican, we got to cut, we got to cut. And over the years, I've, I've come to see just how good this county does with the little it has. And over the last several years, we have lowered the truth in taxation number because we went through COVID and we wanted to make sure that we weren't burdening people. And, but we always said, there's going to become a day where we're going to have to pay the piper, you know? And, and that day is here for a lot of reasons, some in our control, but a lot of it not in our control. So as you look at the county, where is your biggest growth? In, in which district is your biggest growth, do you believe?
Well, we're seeing significant growth in Golden Valley. We're seeing significant growth countywide. But Lake Havasu is growing at a record pace. Bullhead is growing at a record pace. Kingman is seeing growth. So it really is a countywide growth that we're seeing. And it's reflecting in the calls for service we're taking. That's why as the calls increase and the population grows, we have to continue increasing our staffing. We've been chasing our tail for the thirty-three years that I've been working here. Back in the early nineties, when population began to double and we were still at that low level, that hurts us now. Because fast forward thirty years, well, if we'd have done a deputy a year, two deputies a year, we would be where we're at. But we didn't do it. And that's not a, that's not to point daggers at anybody, certainly not this board. That's just the fact of the matter. We did not stay current with the growth throughout the years, and now it's biting us all.
No, that's, that's true. And we didn't, and there were, you know, in all fairness, there were supervisors here who wanted us to do that, looked at the future. But the more conservative ones said, let's keep it low, let's keep it low. But there comes a time, folks, that we, we need more revenue to, to, just to give the services that we're mandated to do. We can make cuts. I mean, even today, we heard things I didn't know about, making little notes that we can do here and there. And along with some of the other proposals, I think we, we can do it. I mean, I remember watching these meetings where Sheriff Sheehan would come and he'd do his presentations about how we are so far much lower than all the other. And then we were losing all of our good sheriffs to other counties. And now we lose them to, to the cities because they're going gangbusters because of the sales tax. And again, you know, we're not, it's not, we're not going to talk about that today. Maybe we will, but I doubt it. But I think that we have a solution on the table. But again, I, I, I'm glad that we are having this exercise. It was, it's painful, and I'm sorry that we have to go through it. I don't think it's necessary. But I've learned a lot. I hope that the people watching this are learning a lot and that together we can come through and do what is best for the county. Thank you, Sheriff.
Supervisor Angus, thank you. Final note, it just popped in my head. So there's fifteen sheriffs in Arizona, fifteen county sheriffs. About a year ago, I was talking with one of my brother sheriffs who's having difficulty with their board. And it got to a point where he is now in a lawsuit trying to get funding, necessary funding to do the job. And I thought, how horrible of a situation is that? I have been so blessed to have a board. We might not always agree, but we seem to work it out through, through the course of time. So when this came up, you can understand my, point blank, my disgust that this is happening. But I'm thankful that you're looking to resolve it, so.
Thank you. Other comments from our sheriffs?
Sheriff, I have a couple of questions. When you were talking about the areas that are booming, I was a little shocked you didn't mention up north. The Mojave County doesn't end at the Grand Canyon. We've got this whole section way up north. And southern Utah and northern Arizona, up in that canyon country, is booming as well. Not only that, but I, I think, I think in Supervisor Bishop's district, there's a huge master plan development up in the White Hills area that's going to be coming out, which is tremendous. And I just really hope that we stay in front of it from a law enforcement perspective. Those areas being rural, you know, it's, those are going to be some significant areas of growth and future revenue someday. So, thank you.
Yeah, Chairman, just to answer that, I'll say, you know, looking back at the way you answered, I should have said all the county. But in reality, when I think about the hotbeds, really Golden Valley is exploding, and that's a major concern for us. And we base this on statistical data each month for, for crime rates.
The substations, you could build those, but it would be great to have people to actually work in them.
Yes.
This plan would, would affect the staffing of the currently planned substations? Yes or no?[1683.33]
Yes.
Okay, and not in a good way? You wouldn't have enough people?
It would not be a good way.
Thank you. All right.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if you're done.
Supervisor Johnson.
I thought Supervisor Angus was asking this question, but I guess she was asking about the, the growth. My question is, where are your most calls for service? Where are we seeing the most arrests from? Where is our, what is costing us the most money? What area?
The two busiest areas are the Kingman area and the Mojave Valley area. Those are the two busiest areas.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
I just have one question for the treasurer. I'd like to bring up Treasurer Mello. Morning.
Good morning, Supervisor.
Good morning. Thank you for your report. I read through that, and I just want to make sure that I read correctly when it goes to sending out the tax notices to property owners here. Can you just sort of rehash what that looks like under this proposal?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, you know, just, I'm not as eloquent a speaker as my cohorts that were here previously, but I can speak from the heart.
You don't have to be eloquent.
So the treasurer's office is backed as a bank for the county. We have over roughly a billion dollars, that's a B, goes through my office on an annual basis, money coming in and money going out. Through the years, we had 30 full-time employees in the office. We're down to 19. And we're, we're good with that. But in order to, to accomplish the work and the quality of work that my staff does, they're, they're highly skilled and they're specialized in their job. To come up with four positions that I could let go of, I just can't. They're irreplaceable staff to us, to this county, the amount of work and the quality that they can push through. So I was left with a very tough decision. My statutory duties do not require me to mail out tax bills. That is a hardship on our constituents, on my staff. But with my 19 staff, we will be able to process those payments, treasurer's receipts, service all the different districts, fire districts, school districts. But I absolutely can't do without my staff. So what that means is roughly 40,000 of mortgaged properties will receive a notice letting them know what their tax will be. That is, that is requirement of us. But the other roughly 250,000 constituents will not. But we are here to help. They're more than welcome to call our office, go online. We will, we will communicate with them, and they will have their, the information that they need. And I do want to let our constituents know that that does not affect this year, their tax bills coming out to them next week.
So for the 250 tax notices, it would be next fiscal year?
Correct.
Which is what we're talking about here?
Correct.
Those, those folks would have to go online to get their statement or visit the office here? I also read, are your satellite offices with those, with those closed, or would you keep those open?
Well, we don't have satellite offices. We have drop boxes.
Sorry, drop boxes, excuse me.
Drop boxes in Bullhead and Lake Havasu.
Okay, so they would have to go on the, on the internet to obtain their statement if they want to print that out?
Yep.
Okay. And then my other question is just regarding investment policy with everything that's going on here. Hopefully you guys stay with the safe, you know, liquidity, safety and yield. I know that a past treasurer that Mojave County had many years ago kind of almost went the, the way of, what was his name, Bob Strohman in Orange County? When you had two flashy Merrill Lynch guys come in and had them invest into some higher risk stuff. And it kind of happened here, too.
Yeah, it did.
A long time ago, and just want to make sure that that's never gonna happen, no matter.
Never gonna happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions from anybody else?
Questions for the treasurer. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Madam Treasurer, you're not interested in derivatives?
No.
I do have a serious question, though. Do we charge the other taxing authorities for servicing their taxes?
We do. Can you help me come up with that number? Yeah, it's 350,000 a year is reimbursed from our special districts.
So that, how does that get apportioned out to those taxing authorities?
Chairman Lingefelter, Supervisor Gould, the Finance Department gives us a spreadsheet with the complete breakdown of the charges for the districts, and we apply those as journal entries in December of each year.
More to the point of, is it a percentage of the taxes collected? Is it a flat rate?
They calculate a rate per parcel that goes for the assessor's work, the treasurer's work, county attorney, I believe. And they just pass that off to us, and we take that money from the districts, and it's credited to County General.
So that's the processing fee for the collection of their tax. Thank you, sir. My other question was, I heard something about that you would no longer process the, was it the tax deeds or the supervisor sale properties?
Tax deed sale.
The tax deed sale. Does statute give that sole authority to you?
Well, our piece in it, we wouldn't be. There will still be some for the clerk of the board that she could do, but without our, we aren't required to do it, no.
So, and you're not, statute doesn't give that sole authority to you to do that job?
Correct.
So if we wanted to privatize that job, we could do that?
Imagine you could, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. No, thank you very much. I don't think there's any other questions? Any other questions? No. I'd like to call, I do have a question for Public Health. I'd like to have Dr. Kingsley or somebody from the Public Health Department come up if they could. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, I was hoping for some more nuanced discussions this morning, but if we're not gonna have those, I just want to make sure that I understand the impact in what you submitted as a part of this exercise. You would close all three of the senior centers?
The proposal that was submitted is closure of all three, but with the caveat of doing a warm handoff to either a nonprofit or a city to take over those services.
Have, probably premature, but have you ever, at this point in time, had any of those discussions right now with any nonprofits or, or cities? I know that the city of Kingman, they don't have the revenue to, to fully fund the senior center here.
Sorry about that. Had an emergency call.
Oh, that's okay.
So the question is, are we speaking with any nonprofits or cities in order to incorporate the senior centers at this time?
Yeah, it may be premature. You may not have, you may have, I just.
I did the premature, just kind of speaking to the cities and kind of where they're at, just discussions, just for that information to have for you if you had any of those questions. Nothing set in stone, anything, just curious questions, just, I did do that. You're correct, Kingman would not be able to incorporate it at this time.
No. I can tell you, if you even touch those senior centers, people are gonna lose it. And that's, I believe that absolutely. The only thing I want to protect, if anything goes through as far as cuts are concerned, has to do with public health, environmental health, and the restaurant inspections. Because I think it's kind of important for people to be able to go out to a restaurant and trust that they're not gonna get food poisoning.
Those are, which is a form of tax, but those are fee-based, so that, that is self, in a sense, self-supported. So all the environmental health is, and nothing is drawn from general fund through.
Okay, good. Those are gonna be protected.
Those are protected, yes.
Any other questions for Public Health while they're at the podium?
I have a question.
Supervisor Johnson.
Questions for the county attorney? Do we give staff the authority to negotiate giving up of our services to cities without board approval?
Chairman Lingefelter, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson, I imagine that would likely be something to go through the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Kingsley. So would you be, if you were to close the senior center, you would then abandon those food programs that take place in the senior center?
So as part of the holistic of this, and as previous comments have been made, that is not the goal at all. I think the discussions here is, what's the best solutions? And the end goal for all of us is to keep those services there. So how, how does that most appropriately happen? With WACOG, we do have to have a general fund match to them in order to even participate in with those. It would just be the discussion of providing those services. If it's limited services, if we have to cut back on the amount of meals that we provide, or, or to those points. We are at a critical point with staffing and with buildings and being able to maintain them, that we will most likely need to have an increase in general fund initiatives in order to continue to support them moving forward. But I think the goal overall is that we do not lose these services, but that we meet those seniors as best as possible.
Let me rephrase that.
Yeah, if you want to rephrase that.
Your, we, we asked for your 18% cut, and in your 18% cut, it talks, it speaks of closing the senior centers. The senior centers also have feeding programs in the senior centers.
Yes.
Would, did your proposal that we asked you for, that include canceling the food programs?
That would be the, if it came to that, yes, that's the last one on all those. If, if it came to that point, and if we had to cut, then ultimately, that's where the first cut comes, on the ranking of, of what is provided that we provide.
So would that also?
Melissa could comment perhaps better on that.
So we only provide the food services out of the senior centers. The senior centers themselves are run by site councils, or in the city of Kingman, they're ran by somebody that the city of Kingman outsources or contracts with in order to have those senior centers open. So the activities, the buildings themselves, senior centers themselves, we do not own those. And in fact, in Golden Shores, we have to pay a lease every year in order to run the food program out of there. So the food program is what is part of public health, and we're the only public health department that provides that service within the state of Arizona.
So normally, the county doesn't run the food program?
It's normally ran either by cities or by nonprofits.
Interesting. So do we own the Lake Havasu Senior Center?
The building is a county building.
Okay.
As well as Kingman.
And Kingman is also, Bullhead City Rent does their own thing, I believe?
We did own that building, and then when Bullhead City took it on in 2014, we transferred the building to the ownership of the city.
Okay. And then the Golden Shores, we pay rent to Golden Shores Community Association for the use of that building. Do we have any other buildings that we rent for senior?
No, we do not. We have those two buildings.
So what would happen, the Meals on Wheels program, is this then run by an outside group also?
No, the Meals on Wheels and the Congregate Eating are run by us.
Okay, so both the Meals, and so your, in your proposal was, was essentially elimination of the food program? Or the county's involvement in the food program?
The county's involvement in the food, that's how I would phrase it. The elimination of the county's involvement in the food program, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions for Public Health Department while they're at the podium? Thank you, Dr. Kingsley.
Thank you.
Any, any of the board members wish to call up any of the other directors at this point? Okay, hearing nothing. The second part of item number two is further direct staff regarding the October 18th, 2023 special budget meeting. Before we get to that, the only person that hasn't really spoken this morning is Manager Elters. Did you have anything that you wanted to contribute?
Sir Chairman, board members, I don't believe so at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Perhaps, perhaps one comment, though. Just a reminder that in the, in the severe recession that we had between 2009 and 2013, most, many departments lost staffing at a severe level and have gradually been building up. And some of them, perhaps quite a few, were just getting back to that level of staffing of 10 years ago, and some perhaps didn't even quite attain it. So just, just the recognition that, that we're, we're really making up, we're building back up, and we're, we're restaffing from those days still. So just wanted to add that to what you've heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Elters. I had opened it up to the board members, any discussion on the entirety of the 18% report to the board, things that you'd like to see going forward for the October 18th, 2023 special meeting. Manager Elters, Financial Services, Director Mornian, I'm not sure if you guys can turn it around before October 18th. I know that we paid CSA an additional sum for bolstering their research capability, so perhaps they could assist on this. But I'd be really interested in getting maybe an order of magnitude estimate on what Mojave Countywide construction sales tax revenues might look like. And also an estimate of what countywide Airbnb and hotel taxes would be.
Chairman Lingefelter, I can reach out to CSA for those numbers. I did receive your email just prior to this meeting, and I did look back through our records for FY16 through FY20. When it came to the county excise tax that was in place, I didn't have detailed records that went back further than that. But over that roughly four and a half year period since the sales tax sunset midway through fiscal '20, in the contracting, the prime contracting subcategory within the excise revenues, we collected roughly $3 million over that five-year period. It equated to about 9% of total countywide excise revenue over that same five-year period.
Thank you. The only thing I'd like to throw out, to be entertained by this board is, excuse me? Oh, excuse me. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe during that period of time, the state changed how contractors pay tax. Subcontractors that deal directly with their customers no longer collect tax. We, my air conditioning business, I don't collect tax from my customers. I pay tax on my supplies where I buy them. So if I have things shipped in from other areas, I pay the tax. The tax goes to where that, that purchase was made, not to where it was shipped. So that, that'll throw it off somewhat. If you're a subcontractor or a contractor working as a subcontractor for a general on a project, they don't pay tax either. The general pays that tax. So they, and they twisted that up and called it sales tax simplification. Gosh, it must, might have been six or eight years ago, but I want to keep that in mind, Finance Director. Thank you, Chairman.
Sure, to that point, to further build on that, I know that we have Nucor Steel in Mojave County. In my district, the Kingman Airport Industrial Park, we have several manufacturers that produce construction-related materials. So, but by what you're saying, Supervisor Gould, the construction materials that are produced in Mojave County at those locations, those would be taxed in Mojave County, or they would be taxed in the county that they're actually used in construction?
No, manufacturing does not collect sales tax. The products that they make are going to a wholesaler. The wholesaler sells those to the contractor, so the tax would be paid at the location of the wholesaler.
Okay.
So for, it's actually, it would be more beneficial to have a wholesaler than a manufacturer in that particular respect?
Great, thank you. The only other thing I'd like to throw out is, and I know it's not a whole lot of money, but every bit counts. I'd like to suggest that we sweep the electric vehicle fund. It's just an idea. I'd open it up to the board as far as any other discussion on the report, things that you'd like to direct staff for the October 18th. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you want to put the sales tax vote on the calendar for next meeting, I'm fine with that. And then I can show you folks that I'm not gonna vote for it. And then we can move on to finding a solution for our situation. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Supervisor Angus.
Well, since that's been thrown out there, I just want to make a statement that I believed when I took this position that we are a democracy, that majority rules. And I just want it on the record that the majority of this board wants to see a new source of revenue. And that's the way we believe we can go forward. But if we have to do these draconian cuts, there will be a price to pay. And if you read what I said, I mean it. I, I think it's irresponsible to take everything that we've worked for and tear it apart, to tell our, our employees that they're expendable and everything they've done for us doesn't matter. So you brought it up, Supervisor Gould. You know that this is always about you because you've said it before, so let's just put it out there. And if all of this hasn't convinced you we need new revenue, I don't even know what to say anymore. This is all for nothing. This is all for nothing.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, in the budget, we have 26 million 598,103 dollars um, in capital improvement projects, which is more than 18.5 million. So if you take a look at that, you have the morgue at 4.9 million, the remodel of the old courthouse, 11.7 million, the legal center for 9.8 million dollars. That's more than enough money to close the supposed, uh, the supposed deficit. Those people, those all those things are housed now. The morgue is is privately contracted. You don't have to make these cuts. You don't have to scare the employees, even though people are running around trying to instill fear in the hearts of the employees. That solves your problem without raising taxes, without getting into the line item budgets. I would prefer to go to zero-based budgeting and and look at individual items inside of the department's budgets. Because I took a look at some of that stuff, and there's stuff in there that that needs to go. But you could solve that problem with just with not building those buildings. And I know that you'll try to sell this as a public safety tax, but in reality, it's a building wishlist tax. That's really what it was. So we'll see how well that works at the at the voting booth. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop, it looked like you might have a comment.
My only comment is that I believe we should put this to a vote at the at the next meeting and have it on the record and go forward from from that. Uh, my vote will be to, uh, say yes to the quarter cent sales tax. I think that's the obvious and probably the, uh, the the best overall for Mojave County, not only for the employees, but for our residents and our visitors. So, um, but I think until we we actually put it to a vote, I'm not ready to throw Supervisor Gould under the bus at at this time. He's he said he'll vote no, but he has not done that. So, um, I'll I'll wait and see what his vote is, and and then we'll go from there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Mr.?
Supervisor Johnson.
Sheriff Suster asked if I had any comments. I'd just like to say why can't we all just get along?
Chairman Lingenfelter, uh, if I might just respond to Supervisor Gould just just briefly.
Okay.
You you are correct that if we canceled all the capital projects, there is funding that would cover the gap next year. It would carry us through, I believe, into the year after that as well, assuming that we leave the property tax rate alone uh, and don't revert back to going with the truth and taxation rate and over the next year or two. Uh, but it's it's essentially the same strategy that got us where we are today, where we have a recurring revenues that do not keep pace with the recurring expenses. And so, yes, we can, we can do the same thing next year and balance the budget with one-time revenues. You're absolutely correct there. Uh, it will not solve the long-term problem, though. We will, we will rapidly get to a point where the general fund balance is too low to span that three-month period we have between the beginning of the fiscal year and when the property tax revenue starts rolling in, uh, towards the end of September. We will not have a contingency fund in case, you know, God forbid, something happens where we need to draw on a contingency fund. And so I would just strongly recommend that we don't take that course of action because it's 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 just putting off the inevitable at this point.
Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Mornian, the you're making the assumption that inflation is going to run at the same level that it has been running. I don't think that that's going to continue. The also making the assumption that our fund balance looks appears to run about $53 million in the at least in the graph that you gave me. So I don't know where the cash flow issue, I don't know if the cash flow issue is going to be changed that much by the fact that we don't raise a tax.
Supervisor Gould, I'm I'm not suggesting that we raise the tax. I'm just saying if we keep the tax levy rate the same, the projections that we built out, um, and on the property tax revenue side, after conferring with the assessor's office, because they're the ones that set the values that that revenue is derived from, we used a 5% rate for the first year of the projections. Believe it was a 4.5% rate the second year, a 4% rate the year after that. So we we decreased the further out the timeline you get, the more conservative we're being in those projections. We applied the same methodology on the expense side of the equations. We applied the same methodology to the other, like state shared revenue, for instance, because we are seeing that start to contract a bit over the last several months. Uh, we we did not keep projecting 5% year after year after year after year because it would not have been appropriate. I don't expect inflation to stay at the level that that it is at in the long term. We all know that those things are cyclical, but we have built that into the projections in some manner.
The value of property, the decrease in value of property does not create a decrease in revenue because property value is one component of the formula.
Supervisor Gould, you're right. It's one component of the formula.
And the truth in taxation is based on revenue and not on property values. And we could continue debate if you want, but I don't know that everybody else needs to hear it. Thank you, sir.
Supervisor Angus.
I have one more comment. People may not be aware of this, but starting January 1st, 2025, every supervisor is going to get a $20,000 raise. So I'm asking right here for those who plan on being here that you promise to forego that raise when the time comes for the cause.
So that's that's.
I just I'm just throwing that out there. That people don't know that every elected official is going to get a 20. Now, I'm not doing with the other elected officials. That's that's they make those decisions. I'm talking about the board supervisors.
Chairman Lingenfelter.
Supervisor Bishop.
That's not agenda, so I don't think we can really put it out there right now like that.
I'm not asking a vote. I'm just.
But since since I'm retiring, it it doesn't really matter to me. So I would I would say, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I want to make a comment first, then I'll get to you. We can certainly put that on the agenda. We can certainly put on what it would look like to defer or perhaps even cancel some of the current capital improvement projects under that program. It would solve the fiscal year 25 problem. Unfortunately, though, I think it just, in my own opinion, is one guy that's elected up here. Um, I think it just sort of continues this short-term thinking that has sort of gotten this county into the current situation. I've only been on this board for two and a half years. There's been a lot of things that have happened, um, that in my own opinion, you don't have to agree with me, can be attributed to short-term thinking and not medium or long-term thinking. And that's just me. The proposal that was brought, I've had many discussions with you, County Manager, on that and and Luke, and I feel as a conservative, and I've been a conservative all my life, that I wanted to run what you're you were presenting to us through a lot of different filters, right? And I told you, I would only vote for something if we knew that the total combined rate wasn't going to go up. I didn't I didn't want anybody to be able to say that we were raising taxes. It might be different components of a tax, accumulative rate, but I wasn't going to vote for something that was actually going to raise our taxes. I didn't believe in that. So what you had presented to me in my office was that, we'd be able to decrease the primary property tax rate down to 1.55 or perhaps even a little lower than that with in addition to the sales tax thing. My next question was then, I want to make sure that I know every single penny is going to public safety and to the law enforcement, or else I'm not going to vote for it. Because if you have a general thing, you can put it to anything you want, and I don't support that. So I said, if you can show me absolutely that it's dedicated, the sales tax component, that I would consider it. But I wanted to read the ordinance, and I wanted there to be, as you put it, a circuit breaker in there that if any three supervisors in the future attempted to get together and say, we're going to now raise the property tax side of that combined rate, that the circuit breaker would kick in, and it would crash the sales tax rate that we had approved, and we'd be back to square one as a as a as a protection for our taxpayers. And you said that that was going to be in there, and I think that you've been working for with the attorney's office. My last question, that you've been trying to refine that to make sure that it's absolutely bulletproof. I haven't read what you guys have, but I look forward to reading that if it comes up. The third thing that I thought was important was a dedicated revenue source for law enforcement, for our sheriff's office. District One is primarily rural, all the way up to the Utah border, and that's what I hear the most. People want law enforcement. They live in Mojave County because they don't want it to be crazy like it is in all these other places that don't take it seriously like we do. So that was important to me. And I think this is a good exercise to go through. It's painful, but I mean, we're going to clearly, we're going to get to some cost avoidance and cost savings opportunities, and that's always a good idea. But it was always my assumption that hopefully we would go through this exercise. We would identify some, even if they're they're painful, some cost avoidance and some cost savings. And then that would be hopefully, uh, a part of a solution that would look at something that was, as a conservative, that I could look at myself in the mirror, and I could look at my constituents and say, this is good, this makes good sense because of this, this, and this. It's also a good idea, um, I think. And I don't want to get into percentages about who contributes how much, but Mojave County is very strong in tourism. We have over 1,000 miles of freshwater coastline. We've got lakes, we've got canyon country, we've got Borough Creek, all these other places that are very beautiful. We have tourists, and right now they can come here and they are recreating 100% on our backs. If they come here with their huge boats or whatever they do, get lost, search and rescue has to go out and get them, or the sheriff has to go out and clean up jet skis or boats or whatever, we're the ones that are paying 100% of that public safety response. They're recreating for free on our backs. And that's just from a fiscal policy perspective. I don't agree with that. I don't think that that's fair. I also think, as a fellow business owner to Supervisor Gould, even if we own our properties as business owners, I want that rent payment every year that we have to pay. Um, so the government doesn't come in and take our property. I want that to be as low as possible on the people that actually live here and on our and our seniors. And I think that that also accomplishes that. We can have more discussion about that at a next meeting. But, um, as long as you can guarantee that it passes all those filters, then it seems to be a good conservative option, in my own opinion. So, um, I guess let's put that on the agenda, and we'll discuss it more in depth. Uh, hopefully have a nuanced conversation on that. Um, Supervisor Gould, do you want to have staff put the CIP projects on our next agenda to talk about deferring or canceling those? Okay. Did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Chairman.
Anything else on the board on the on the meeting for October 18th that other board members would like to see?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
I don't know if this is the right way to keep doing this, but if you're going to start picking things out, I'd put on the our $10,000 a month lobbyist who hasn't made a report in three meetings.
Okay.
Chairman Lingenfelter, Supervisor Johnson, what what exactly did you want from the lobbyist? Were you suggesting?
Uh, he's suggesting that we cut high ground.
Okay.
Supervisor, uh, Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we once upon a time talked about shopping lobbyists. And if you're going to shop for a new lobbyist, this is a good time of year to do it because the legislature is not in session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould, um, my question would be, if we get rid of high ground, not not having a lobbyist, is that what your intent is?
No, that's not my intent. My intent was to remind the board that once upon a time, we talked about shopping lobbyists.
Yeah.
And it's a bad middle of the legislative session is a bad time to shop for a new lobbyist. If you're going to shop for one, you should do it now.
Good point. Supervisor Johnson, was it your intent that Mojave County, if we can't if we canceled high ground, that we would not have a lobbyist?
That would be mine with with the financial situation we're in. But I understand what Supervisor Gould says. Now is a good time if you're going to look at it. But I think our overall thing is coming up with 18 and a half million, so.
We can certainly put it on the agenda. Uh, I do have a comment on that, though. We've got a lot of influential and powerful people coming after both our rural groundwater and our Colorado River water right now. And if we don't have somebody that's down there every week, and if I can't travel down there because we don't have money to travel, then, you know, I personally feel that we're serving up our citizens' water supplies in the future to folks, um, that are already down there and that do have lobbyists. And, um, you know, they're going into the reconsultation on the Colorado River. Um, we're still hoping to get some new third option on managing rural groundwater supplies. Every single one of our communities is 100% dependent either on Colorado River water or groundwater. And if we're not going to have somebody down there to advocate for our interests, then I don't think that that bodes well for our future at all. Water is foundational to everything. We couldn't even be sitting here having these tough discussions if we didn't have water. So we can talk about it. Anything else? Hearing nothing? I, oh, excuse me. County Manager Elters.
Sir Chairman, thank you. I I do not wish to comment on the, um, elected officials pay, but I would like to comment on the capital improvement program, and I feel compelled to do so. And understanding that the board just directed staff to make it uh, a part of our next board meeting, this my comments I would hope would serve as a segue to that and for the board to keep them in mind as we come back. The the two projects that have been primarily identified, which are the, um, courthouse, Phase Two. I'll call it the Law Justice Center, uh, Phase Two, which includes the annex and the historic part of the cold courthouse and the Legal Services Center. The need for those have been established, and they are needed. In fact, just so the board is aware of what I am aware of, the justice courts that are currently in modulators that have served more than twice their life cycle are waiting for the improvements to the annex to be completed and the historic piece of the courthouse so they can move into that and have a place to operate from. Uh, that urgent that need is still with us, and the urgency is increasing as time goes by because the condition of the modular are only getting worse. As far as the Legal Services Center, we've discussed that previously. It will house multiple departments, both on the prosecution side and the defense side. Not only they are growing out of space and have been at that, um, position for a while. The buildings that are they're in are costing us significant amount of money to maintain in operational condition. One in particular is not ADA compliant, and and it's a matter of time. In fact, I think I mentioned it to you before. We have employee that needs ADA accommodation. I will add, the cost of these buildings does not decrease. It continues to increase with time. When we programmed funding for these buildings based on information available to us, which was only two and a half years ago, we had about $8 million for the, um, Law Justice Center, Phase Two, and about $9 million for the, uh, Legal Services Center. We bid out the Law Justice Center, and the bid came in over $12 million. And the Legal Services Center is anticipated to be 12 to 13 today. That is why we put money in the contingency to cover those projects should the board want to proceed with them. I will end with, the need is with us and will continue to be. Using these projects to balance the budget would be only a continuation of as you and other. others have commented, on a practice that got us here to start with. And I will add, the last thing that I'll add is related to inflation. I will, I'm not qualified to speculate other than to say inflation, we were told in spring of '22 would be transitory. It has not been transitory, it has continued to be with us, and while it has dropped some, it's sticking back up. And I don't know what it's going to go from here. I just think the cost of construction and the, the cost increases that we could and should anticipate will be with us for some time to come with these buildings. We'll discuss some more next time. Thank you for giving me time to speak.
Thank you. We can certainly talk about all those CIP projects, and it would be my intent that if they're to be deferred or to be even canceled, that we would have roll call votes on every single one of those. Recently, I took a tour of the historic courthouse downtown, which is part of this project, this Law and Justice Center project you're talking about. And, you know, you have this historic building, it's beautiful, and walking through it, it's a, it's horrible, and it continues to, to, what would you say, deteriorate a road? I mean, I counted several thousand dead bugs, a couple of dead pigeons. You've got in the big courthouse, or the courtroom, excuse me, that they used to do the swearing-in ceremonies in, you've got historic wood that's starting to warp, broken windows, and it just broke my heart to think about this piece of history, Mojave County's history, it's sitting there and it's just deteriorating, and we're allowing it because we're not, potentially not moving forward. It's, if you haven't taken a tour of that recently, I would say maybe contact the courts and arrange it. It's pretty eye-opening. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing nothing, we are adjourned.